Okay, are we good to go?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, all right. Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to this blustery windy March morning here for the March 6, 2018 Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Lynda, would you call roll, please?
Dave Line?
Here.
Pyro State Carvalho?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Inzkeep?
Deckent.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have Pastor Darrell Peterson. Good morning, Darrell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we come before you today, and Father, how many different ways can we pray for the city council? And Father, we just kind of hit the basics. And Father, we just pray that the council members are knowledgeable of what the issues are and the best way to vote. Father, we just thank you for the management of the city council and the city, and Father, the wisdom and the guidance that they need. Father, we just thank you for all the divine protection that we have around this city, the police department, fire department, medical professionals. Father, we thank you for so many things that we're so blessed, and blessed beyond measure, even though at times it seems like we don't understand and we don't know why. But I thank you, Father, today at this meeting, that, Father, things will be done, conducted properly, and everything will be said, will be said to the glory of you. Thank you for these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Darrell. Okay, next item?
Item 4A, presentation by the Cosmosphere.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just wanted to take an opport-
Jim, excuse me.
Yep.
Would you announce your name and address?
Yes, Jim Remar, CEO of the Cosmosphere, 1100 North Plum here in Hutchinson.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to take an opportunity to update the council on some happenings at the Cosmosphere, given that we do receive a portion of our operation from the sales tax. I felt it was important to provide an annual update to the council. First, I would like to thank the citizens for voting the sales tax in. It makes up, depending on the year, between 16 and 18 percent of our operating budget, which is incredibly important. And what does that support? Well, it supports, in a large part, the leading-edge exhibits and educational programming that we're able to provide on an annual basis. What type of impact does that have? Well, it allows us to have over 100,000 participants annually in our programs. It brings over 1,000 camp participants to the Cosmosphere in the summer, over 800 scouts, 12,000 schoolkids. Every county in the state comes to the Cosmosphere. 38 states and 24 countries also come. And we've got two international traveling exhibits that expose the Cosmosphere brand as well as Hutchinson. And so, the impact that we provide is tremendous. But we also recognize that with any business, there's a need to grow revenue. And for all practical purposes, we're a break-even operation. And as with any business, we're looking at ways to improve upon that. Over the past years, we have gone through what we call revitalization, that looks at addressing infrastructure needs, deferred maintenance issues, improving our exhibit programming and presentations, as well as our educational presentations. But here, the last quarter of 2017, we put forth one of the most exciting parts or aspects that I have seen in a while, and that's a strategic plan. We went through a course of internal discussion and debate over the past four or five months prior to the end of the year to look at what is the future and the direction of the Cosmosphere. And we really began to look at how we can continue to grow existing revenue streams, but also enhance and improve upon that. And out of that, two tracks emerged, and that is education and our SpaceWorks Division. SpaceWorks continues to be a viable portion of the Cosmosphere operation. You've probably seen in the media recently the Johnson Space Center restoration project that we're doing. That's an incredibly historically important project, and we're honored that the Cosmosphere and the city of Hutchinson are a part of that. Also, we're not relying specifically on people through the front door. We're looking at how we can improve our reach and our impact. Just recently, our education department brought online some blended curriculum to where nationally or internationally, people can purchase our curriculum packages and introduce those programs into the classroom. We're literally working with people in New Mexico, the UK, the UAE, in an effort to, again, expand our reach. So, we recognize the importance that the local sales tax plays, but we also understand the need to look at expanding and increasing our revenue, and we are doing that. So, I just, again, wanted to give a brief update and then thank the council and the community on the support that they provide. Any questions?
Jim, could you talk a little bit about, is the Cosmosphere still looking to a satellite facility up in northeast Kansas?
Yes, that's a great question. We are. We are working with the Price Brothers, who is a developer in Kansas City. They have a development called Blue Hawk. It's a mixed-use, so it's commercial, retail, food and beverage, hotel, multifamily housing, as well as single-family housing. And as a part of that, they are doing an education/entertainment component. If you're familiar with the Sports Forum down in Wichita, they're introducing a sports facility similar to that. And then the education side of it is Cosmosphere. And this is specifically to establish the Cosmosphere brand in Kansas City. It is in no way, shape, or form moving the Cosmosphere, nor are Cosmosphere funds or sales tax funds, more importantly, being used to develop it. It is all being generated through private and state funding in Kansas City. Once completed, and it's still an if, we don't know whether this will happen or not, we are very hopeful, and it looks like it will. But once completed, it'll be around a 60,000-square-foot facility. We like to call it a teaser facility that will allow us to educate people who come to Cosmosphere Innovation Space about Hutchinson, about what we do, and hopefully spur tourism to Hutchinson. More importantly, it will also serve as a feeder to our education programs. Say a student goes to Level 1 there in Kansas City, they could ultimately come to Levels 2 or 3 here in Hutchinson. So, it is to be a complement to what we do in Hutchinson, it is not to replace it. The main artifacts that we have here in Hutchinson will remain in Hutchinson. Hutchinson, right now, is about the history, the past. That facility may look more towards the future and innovation. And probably the most important aspect of this is the Cosmosphere will receive a management fee that will come to Hutchinson and help support the Hutchinson operation. The developers understand the importance the Cosmosphere plays and the importance the Cosmosphere plays in Hutchinson specifically. And so, they want to do whatever they can to continue to enhance and improve the facility in Hutchinson. So, for managing this facility, we will receive a fee that we then, in turn, can put towards capital improvements or reserves and help with the general operation here in Hutchinson.
Jim, there's a misperception among some people in the community about how that facility is being funded-
Right.
...and if, for instance, tax revenue from Hutchinson is being used. And there's just, I know that's not the case. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, literally, the Cosmosphere has no financial stake in the game. Cosmosphere dollars are not going towards the development, so there is no money leaving Hutchinson that is going to Kansas City. Zero sales tax revenue will be utilized for this project, and in fact, zero dollars from Cosmosphere will be utilized. The project is being funded primarily through star bonds, which is through the state, and then through private donations in the Kansas City metro area. So, fortunately, the Cosmosphere has no liability in this, only positive outcomes.
Jim, a question regarding your footprint-
Sure.
...the existing footprint. Years ago, as I recall, I believe the Cosmosphere acquired the land that the former Hutchinson Floral business was on. What is your strategic plan call for in terms of any utilization of that ground to the south of the existing footprint?
That's a great question. When we embarked upon our revitalization program back in 2013 and 14, we initially looked at and thought we would ultimately develop over there, primarily an education-type of operation. Working with the consultants, we realized that we have a lot of untapped or underutilized square footage within the Cosmosphere facility. So, using that square footage better will allow us to maximize the existing footprint. So, right now, we do not have any plans to put anything on that existing property. At some point, I think we're going to have to determine what we want to do with that, whether that is create additional parking, or work with the college, or something like that. But I can't justify building a new building when deferred maintenance on our existing footprint is an issue. So, at this point in time and for the foreseeable future, it will just remain green space. Thank you.
Any other questions, or?
I just want to say thank you for the investment in our youth in particular. I think that it's far-reaching when you invest in education, and I'm happy to see that the Cosmosphere is putting a bigger emphasis on that.
Great. Well, thank you, and again, we appreciate the support of the city and the citizens.
Well, Jim, Cosmosphere, obviously, is a tremendous asset to Hutchinson, and I think everyone realizes that, and we do appreciate the ongoing efforts to innovate and become more strategic in what you do.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item 4A, communications committee audience.
Okay, this is the time for the opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak or address the council on matters or items that are not already on the agenda. Please come forward.
Arthur Anderson, 424 Cary Street.
Good morning, Andy.
Morning. Just an update, I came here and addressed y'all last week about communications and hoping you all would get more in touch with your districts. I just want to let you know, I've got the website up. It's called Common Sense for Hutchinson. We're on Facebook. We brought it up last week, we're already at 70-plus vetted members. The purpose of the website is to bring concerns from the citizens. They can put them on the page, and then we all work together to, okay, here's an idea, here's an idea, here's an idea of how we can solve them. There's no way a website to just go on and, you know, I hate the city because they didn't do this, they didn't do this. It's all mediated by the admin, and we keep it, you know, constructive, not a destructive situation. We, as the membership grows, my question is, would there be a chance of getting like a town hall meeting or something with y'all, and we could present our ideas, instead of tying up this space with everybody coming up with an idea? Could we get a list at some point, and I could let y'all know if we could get a town hall meeting to address these issues? I'd also like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you. You reached out to me, and we have our meeting tomorrow, which I appreciate, and I would encourage the rest of the council members to reach out to your people and maybe get something going. I also have a meeting with the Director of Communications, person I have done on Thursday. So, people are reaching out to me, and I think we're getting somewhere. And that's about all I have, just I appreciate the reaching out, and I would encourage y'all to maybe check out the Facebook page, and you can see where we're going. Some of the ideas or complaints are more popular than the others, and we're working to some solutions on those ourselves. I had a boss one time in the Air Force, he told me, "Don't come to me with a problem, come to me with a problem and your solution." So, and that's what we're trying to do here. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the council? Seeing none, next item, please.
Item 5, consent agenda.
I'd like to take Item B, the change order for golf course, and move that into new businesses, our last item. Is there any other comment or motion then on the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda excluding Item B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Lynda, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyro State Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. Next item?
Item 6A, consider waiver of USD 308 fees.
John, are you addressing that for us? Well, I just would just say, this is kind of continuation of conversation we've had over the last month or so regarding the proposed charge of rental fee of $1,000 for the high school graduations, both 308 and 313. And so, you've received a letter from the superintendent of 308 requesting that that fee be waived. We had that conversation here last weekend formally, and we decided that we would put it on for a formal council item. And I did talk with Gary Price yesterday, superintendent, and he cannot be here due to the funeral, but Mr. Kraus is here to represent 308 if there's any questions. So, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion.
To open it for discussion, I would like to make a motion that we waive the fee for USD 308.
I would second that motion.
Okay, discussion?
Okay, I have a question. I'm going to do the what-ifs, all right? Because I know the logic behind your argument was that it's another taxing entity, and therefore we should not be robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, I just want to make sure, now, does this include everybody that's a taxing entity? So, if the city, if the county comes to, say, the public, the health department comes to us and says, "We want to have a job fair or a health fair, and we'd like to use the arena," are we going to waive their fee?
Well, that's a fair question. And I thought about this a lot when I motioned for approval of a consent agenda, which included revisions to the sports arena rental fees under Item D, and we'll have to reconsider that completely. But I know that all the costs for utilities, it's enormous. Maintenance on that facility is something I think maybe the taxpayers didn't consider completely before voting on the renovation. I mean, that, the basic maintenance is ridiculous. But if we look at everything from, how does it affect the taxpayers, the ones who voted to open it? It really was sold as a community facility, and they're going to either pay for the school district to pay us to use the facility, or they're going to pay us to use the facility. And I think, yeah, I think we probably do need to look at waiving it for other taxing entities. I don't know how to get around that argument, that at the end of the day, it's the taxpayer paying it. Now, maybe we have a larger conversation and enter into agreements with each of those entities for a percentage or a fee for them to use it. Maybe that makes more sense? Because I understand that it's going to hurt our budget, but it's also going to hurt the school district's budget, and the taxpayers are paying both. So, I'm open to hearing other ways to resolve that conundrum, but at the end of the day, it's affecting the taxpayers the same. Then again, we're looking at an issue later with the South Hutchinson Police Department, and those are both taxpayers paying those fees into that whole issue. So, I mean, I guess you could really run this down the rabbit hole, and the city pays for everything. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, Nancy, but-
Yeah, I mean, let's define the parameters, I guess, is what I'm saying, you know, the what-ifs.
Now, in the past, they've not paid $1,000 for graduation, right? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Was there no charge?
No fee, no fees.
Okay.
So, in a way, there's no skin off our back, but I understand in another way, it's a lot more expensive to open the doors now that we have air conditioning. So, I guess what I'd like to see as a compromise is maybe we enter into a further discussion with the school districts about some sort of an agreement for fees rendered for cost-sharing of utilities for a certain amount of events. But it just seems like, it seems like a lot of money on their budget when they didn't have to pay it before, and it's all coming out of the same taxpayer pocket. That was my reasoning. And also, I would like to say that I think we're moving away, not we, the city, but in general, we haven't been working together as well as we once did, and I think that is a result of what happened with the economy several years ago, and every man out for himself. But I think we need, it's not really about the $1,000, it's about working together for what's best for our community.
Well, my views are a little bit different. For those of you who know me, I'm a pretty structured guy, and I'm pretty much by the book. And when I look at a rate schedule, I typically would lean toward, well, that's the rate schedule, then we ought to adhere to it. But I guess in this case, my thought process is a little different. It's been kind of a judgment call on my part to support the waiver. I look at this as that this is a community high school graduation. It positively impacts hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of our graduating seniors, their parents, their grandparents. It's more of a subjective thing rather than just by the book. And particularly since there's no gated admission, there's no sponsorships, there's nothing financially to be gained, I'm saying, come on, city, let's do our part this time.
Yes.
And let's allow the waiver. It doesn't address your question.
No.
It's completely different than that.
Yeah, it's totally-
And I appreciate your comments very much so, but from my standpoint, I'm thinking, this is our community's high school graduation, a lot of positive things, positive impacts in terms of a high school graduation. City of Hutchinson, do your part. It may come back to haunt us, I'm not sure, but that's my particular position at this point.
And does USD 313 also have their graduation there?
Yes.
They do? So, I would suspect the same argument to keep to them. But I, John, I remember how much work we put into this rate schedule, and, you know, that last column is for other taxing entities, basically schools, et cetera.
No, actually, what it says is K-12 schools and activity clubs. And tell me what an activity club is.
It could be, probably, a high school booster club, it could be drama club, I mean, it could be all kinds of things.
Can you also clarify, Superintendent Price puts, put a figure on the amount of waiver the city had, or the-
Rec commission.
-rec commission by way of the city?
Well, just to be clear, because in the original letter, it indicated that, because we really, the city doesn't rent any high school facilities, but HRC does, a rec commission. And there's indication that they receive that at free. And the clarification, talking with the rec commission, is that they don't receive that free on the weekends. They rent those, or if you want to call it rent, they pay a custodial fee, whatever that is. And so, HRC would pay that for events that happen in the high school gyms on the weekends. Now, I will say probably, and Tony's not here, but with the construction of new arena, the amount of time that they would be renting from ACC or from the high school might be a lot less. But there were fees. You know, we've charged fees to the high school for Hobart Deder, for Fun Valley. So, there's, you know, we're kind of all over the board. And so, I think, you know, today, we're talking about graduation, let's kind of focus on that, and then, you know, whatever happens with all the other stuff.
And I'd be more comfortable doing that, and then if there's gated admissions or other things-
Yeah.
-I mean, maybe we have that conversation later.
Yeah.
Are you more comfortable with that, John?
Yeah, I mean, I, we opened up a huge can of worms, and there's a lot of different things going on. And, you know, part of the deal's always been, you know, the city, we built and maintained Hobart Deder, Fun Valley, and spent a lot of money doing that, and high school relies on that to play all their games, Rice Park there, and I think we've had a great relationship with USD over the years, and they pay, you know, a pretty minor fee to be able to use those facilities, and they don't have to do anything, you know, to maintain them. And so, I think we've had a really good relationship. Nobody's charging anybody overall, but, you know, at the end of the day, we say it's taxpayer dollars, and that's true, but it's, whose kitty is it coming out of? Because the $1,000 here is, there's only $1,000, and it's either the high school's paying it, or the city's paying it. So, I mean, and that goes with any of those kinds of arrangements, but again, I don't think we've ever had any issues with any of the school districts on our athletic facilities arrangements, so.
Well, I'd like to see us give some time and opportunity for a decision that we spent a pretty good amount of time on. Matter of fact, almost five months ago to the day, today. I know that was our second meeting when we made that decision. And, John, I don't disagree with you. It is a feel-good thing, and yet, again, we made a decision. I don't think it was necessarily a bad one. Maybe it wasn't the best, but I think that we need to give an opportunity to work through it, or let that work itself away. The $1,000, whether, in my opinion, whether it's from the school district or whether it's from us is inconsequential. But I think the broader thing is, we have a very, very nice sports arena that we expected to have some revenue off of. And I think there are a number of activities out there, not just school graduations, but whether they be tournaments, whether they, whatever they might be, that we need to take a look at. And I think if we start making waivers this early in the process, we've not given a chance to what was constructed. And the staff did go back after our first meeting on sports arena fees and rework it. And I think one of those elements had, did have to do with school fees. You know, for me, then, also, where does it stop? The school, the schools and other entities pay franchise fees, they pay stormwater fees. Where do we stop?
That's a good point.
So, I, again, the $1,000, you know, but it's really the broader issue and the other events and entities, and as time goes on, and I don't think we've gotten an opportunity for the schedule that we asked staff to work on and asked staff to revise and then approved to be put into place and get a sense of what kind of impacts it's having.
I would say that I think it's really easy to make policies in a vacuum, and once those start to be tested, it's easy to say, well, that's the policy, instead of going back and looking at what we did- Instead of going back and looking at what we did and admitting that maybe we could have done it a little better or maybe we didn't think of this. And so I, I think there's no harm in deviating from something we've done. We constantly need to be questioning the decisions we made and if they're the best for the city. But it, but I understand that it could, it could go much further because they do pay fees on a lot of other, a lot of other facilities, um, that we upkeep. But again, as John mentioned, it's graduation. Maybe we're overthinking this. Maybe we do a waiver for graduations and it's just kind of an understood thing. And we don't think, well, if we do this waiver, what might happen? Maybe the school's going to want to use that for free forever, you know, for everything. And maybe we're overthinking it. I'd like to see us move forward on a waiver for graduation for both three oh eight and three thirteen.
I would too.
Do we want to hear from Rick?
Yes, I'd like to offer the opportunity. Mr. Kraus, would you like to address the council?
Not particularly, but...
And you don't, and you don't have to, just because we asked.
You know, um, I'm Rick Kraus, Assistant Superintendent, address fifteen twenty North Plum. That's what you need to have for the record. You know, um, we've had a lot of discussion, uh, speaking to the idea of us, uh, what we charge, uh, HTRAC. It's really not a fee. We do cover costs for custodial cleanup on the weekend because that is something that's above and beyond the use of the facility itself. Uh, there is no allowance for utilities or other kinds of things that may happen during that time that, uh, HTRAC or other entities might be in our facilities. One of the differences in your conversation that I've heard is the idea of whether a tournament might come in or other activity. You know, we, uh, uh, we're, we, we aren't collecting fees at the gate. I do see a difference between entities that do charge. You know, Club Missouri, for example, uh, very popular, very important part of our community. They do not, they do have a fee structure that they do pay us in order to use our, our facilities. And that, that to me is a difference than, than a high school graduation or other non-fee generating opportunity. So if you're looking for areas in your discussion to where, why this might be different, I do think there is a, there's an opportunity for the council to look at the fact that we're not generating money off of this. Therefore, we're not giving you a percentage of something that we're keeping for ourselves. You know, and I'd like to think that we can continue as a, as a, as tax entities and make those right decisions for the sake of the community. It is, I think it is, part of it is a feel-good opportunity for you to say, hi, graduations are important in the City of Hutchinson and an opportunity for us to work together on this. Um, I do think there are opportunities for a further conversation about Hobart Deder and other facilities that we use in common. Really perhaps all entities should come together and talk about what does it mean? You know, and is there a time where we're just shuffling the same dollar around among multiple groups? You know, and so if that's happening, that's just, it takes time and money to administer those kind of costs as well. So, coming back to an idea that, you know, is, is there a, a, an idea that we should be responsible for some use of setup time or, or cleanup or whatever? You know, that, that's something I think is a reasonable expectation because we do, uh, pass that along to other entities that use our, our, uh, facilities off hours.
Any question, any questions with Mr. Kraus?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Does the state pay for the three A tournament?
No. We, we don't have a lot of paying ti- uh...
Okay.
We don't.
Functions.
And it just doesn't happen. Even since the rate structure in the new arena, we've, I think, probably had two, two groups that actually paid rent. So that our, our rental revenue isn't going to jump overnight regardless.
We're not, we're not going to make a break.
Nope. That's a contract they have with, uh, the, uh, Hutchins, the Community College. They run the tournament, they pay, um, people, gate takers, I mean, they pay for all that. And then they get a percentage of souvenirs and a, a percentage of gate plus concessions. And then we get a percentage of concessions through our agreement with ACC, so.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
No, it's a good question. Matter of fact, it's one that I had as well, Nancy. And I, that, that's a good example for me. We, we, I think we have a number of things that, that we need to look at and think about differently post, uh, twenty million plus expenditure on the sports arena and the upgrading versus what, what and how we had done things, uh, for many years. Uh, that's a discussion for another time, but I, but it's certainly one I think that we, that needs to be, needs to occur. Further discussion? If not, we've got a motion and a second for waiver of the, uh, fee for the, uh, USD three oh eight for a graduation. Is that, I want to make sure, for graduation, okay.
For graduation.
Okay, now are we doing just three oh eight? Or are we going to do three thirteen as well?
Does three oh nine have their graduation there?
No.
They're smaller.
Let's include them both if we could.
I, I would like to amend my motion to include USD three thirteen as well.
Yeah, I'd second.
Second the amendment?
Second the amendment, mhm.
Okay, so the motion is to waive both, uh, three oh eight and three thirteen.
Graduation.
Graduation ceremonies. Anything further? Linda, would you call roll, please?
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
I'm going to cave on this, but with the caveat that we go back and look at this column and readjust that whole structure. So yes.
Deckent?
No.
Okay, next item.
Item six B, consider lead track use and indemnification agreement with Siemens Gomesa.
Paul Brown, city attorney. Counsel, there's been a request from Siemens to place a derailleur on the lead track, um, for a safety item. And literally what a derailleur does is what it says. It knocks the rail car off the tracks. Uh, they, uh, they work on the lead track on their property. Uh, if a car comes loose and comes down the track, the derailleur will prevent it from reaching their workers on the lead track. I asked them about, I'm not a rail guy, okay? Not by choice. I asked them, I said, we've got switches on the track, isn't that sufficient protection? And they said, the, the rail cars can jump the switches, uh, but they can't jump the derailleur. And it literally pushes the, uh, the, uh, wheels off the rail. And once they go off the rail, they stop because they hit the gravel and the ties and they bury. And this will prevent, uh, it's a safety measure to prevent any, uh, uh, injuries to their workers that are out there. And they have provided an indemnification agreement to the city, uh, for any liability associated with their derailleur. Uh, I also quizzed them about, I said, okay, how do people know this derailleur's there? And you can see, there's, there's a couple of little pictures, a couple of little diagrams showing its location.
I could not figure out that all.
It's, it's before it splits out to the staging tracks and the lead track. And, uh, uh, it, it does, it is labeled, it is in place all the time. They also modify their agreements with Hutch Transportation, uh, so that they're aware that it's there and anyone that, that uses the track and it's, it's only Hutch Transportation. And it could be Burlington Northern, but that's only in the event that Hutch Transportation would be unable to respond or unable to, to provide their services. So it's usually Hutch Transportation. And that will go into their agreement so that they, they know it's there.
So is something they manually, uh, activate or deactivate?
It is manual and it is locked and it is on all the time. Uh, so if, if a, uh, if a rail car or a train is coming down to the facility, then they will, they will move the derailleur and put it to the off position so that it's not on the rail.
It's a piece of equipment?
It's a, yeah, it is.
It is.
It's, it's literally a, a little, uh...
Brake.
It, uh, it sits on the, on the edge, not even a brake. It's like a, the head of a broad arrow. And so when the, when the wheel comes up to it, it pushes it right to the side. And once you push one of the wheels off, that, that derails the whole car.
Why would something like this have to come before the council, just for the indemnification clause?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're satisfied?
Because we're talking about the city's liability.
Got you.
And, and it is our track.
It's our tracks, okay.
It's our track.
A little bit unrelated to that, but, uh, uh, in, in getting to your agreement, I want to refer to, uh, Article Six, if you would. Uh, for the benefit, I think, of all of us and the public in terms of further understanding exactly the arrangements that if there were another user, uh, on that track, again, clarify, this is a city-owned track. This is not Siemens' track, it is the City of Hutchinson's track. So go into a little bit of explanation in terms of that Article Six as it would relate to a potential other customer that would come onto that lead track.
And Siemens in the city has talked about this for a long time. They've been trying to get this out of me for quite some time.
Right.
Because I had a concern that Siemens truly understood that this was the city's track. And it is because we had to pay for it and the type of funding that we used. And if there were a business located to the south on the lead track, we need access on that lead track to the southern portion of the business park. And that's what's, that's what's in, uh, paragraph number six because it's their acknowledgement that it is the city's lead track, that we have allowed them to use that as a staging track. It was not designed as a staging track, but we've had no objection because there isn't anyone to the south. So why not let them use it? And we have done so. Uh, but since they have, they were concerned about their workers being there and thus the need for the derailleur. But it also talks about that in the event that we do have someone that occupies the southern portion of the Salt City Business Park, that they're, they're going to make some changes there. They're going to make commercially reasonable efforts to remove any railcars or equipment blocking access because you can't have them on the track and, and working there. And someone needs to move to the south. And, and the fact that, uh, they will comply with our existing railroad easement, which we have with them. And also talk about mutual utilization, if we have someone to the south, about the derailing system. I mean, there may be somebody to the south that wants that as well. And about the utilization of the track itself. In other words, a cooperation about how that lead track is going to be used, which really needs to happen anyway. Whoever comes to the south, whatever type of business, and if they're using the rail, uh, there has to be cooperation because that's the sole access.
Yeah.
Okay? And Siemens has knowledge, acknowledged that in their indemnification agreement. That was not there in the beginning. Originally, it was just an indemnification agreement. That was the city's negotiations because we wanted that acknowledgement, uh, because of some previous matters we've had with Siemens, um, that, uh, that we were not going to have a, a debate about the necessity of access to the track.
Good on you. Yeah, so you're, you're satisfied that everything, all the decks are in the right order?
I am, yes.
All right, with that, I would move to approve the lead track use and indemnification agreement and authorize the mayor to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, seconded, is there any further discussion? Linda, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item six C, consider approval of Maple Street storm sewer improvement bids.
All tall people are up before me, so.
Break it down, huh?
Yeah. Jeff Peterson, a senior civil engineer with the Engineering Department. Today, I'm just presenting, um, bids that we had for the Maple Street stormwater improvements that were open last week. First, I'll do a little quick summary over the, the project. It involves, let's see if I can do this. It involves a, a number of things in this area. Actually, from ninth to tenth in front of Ferris School, it involves, um, the replacement of existing storm sewer box. We've had problems before. The tops collapsed a couple of times and things like that. So it's, it's just time for maintenance or replacement. It also involves the, uh, replacement of existing storm sewer in Twelfth Avenue from Poplar to Maple Street. That one is in a brick street. It's kind of in the middle. And if you drive that street, you can see that the streets...
Go up and down.
Settled in places, so we're moving it off to the side and filling that up. It also involves lining of existing storm sewer in Maple Street from tenth to twelfth. So that one, we're going to do kind of what we're doing with the sewer system right now. And it also involves some maintenance and rehab of this storm sewer box. The storm sewer box actually goes down Tenth Avenue and then s- down, down Maple Street. So it's, it's a portion of the same storm sewer box that's getting replaced. But this one isn't as, in as bad condition. So this one, we're going to do some point repairs and some inside treatment of it. And then down here on Ninth Avenue, um, or at Poplar Street, we have some what we call burp basins, but they're just inlets that allow the water to cross. We're connecting that back into the Maple Street box. So, so it can flow underground to the Maple Street box. So that's just kind of the brief overview of what the project is. Last week, we received, we received a total of three bids for the project. The low bid was being from AIPAC Kansas, and it was below the engineer's estimate. We evaluated the, the bids and we do have some alternates on this one. The base bid was four, five hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We also considered alternate B. We had two alternates, alternate A and alternate B, which provides some, um, repairs to the box on Tenth Avenue. We elected, since it was under budget, to do the little more extensive, um, rehab and the repairs on that, just to extend the life of that box that's existing there. And then it also, we also considered alternatives for Maple Street from ninth to tenth in order to, um, that box goes down the center of the street there. So, um, we were going to have a, just a patch going down the center of the street with like five feet on one side and five feet on the other side of with, with the existing street, which might be in not the best condition. So we, um, added in the alternative. We had enough funding that, um, we could just replace the whole street for that block in front of Ferris School. So I think that provides us some benefit for the street lasting longer in that location and not having to work on it again in a number of years.
Yeah.
With that, that brings the total project cost to six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The completion date for this project is September fourteenth of two thousand and eighteen, but the portion in front of the school will be done in the summer.
Okay.
So we don't have problems with access because it's a busy place over there during school. But when it starts and ends each day, so. This project is financed by the Stormwater Utility. And it, and it was included as a CIP project a couple of years ago. Then we've held those funds for this because we kind of put this project off for a couple of years because of the Stormwater Master Plan to see if any of the sizing and things like that would be impacted in this area. And the Stormwater Master Plan didn't really, um, have anything to do with upsizing some of these areas. There's areas around it that get improved that would provide some benefit to this overall. But this one is mainly just a, a rehab or a maintenance type project that's been needing to be done for a while. So, um, with that, it is recommended that the council accept the bids and that the base bid, along with alternate B and alternate C, be, be awarded in the amount of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to AIPAC Kansas. And the mayor be authorized to sign the contracts for this project. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeff, except for the lining on, let's see, that's Maple Street. All the rest, the streets will be torn up, opened up so you can get down to the, to do the work, is that correct or...
Yeah, they will, they will be. The, the work is actually, that is correct. The work on Maple Street from ninth to tenth, that'll be closed during construction. The, the Twelfth Avenue one and the work on Ninth Avenue, they'll be, there's probably be some limited access in those because we're moving the, or we're having the storm sewer built on, essentially under the curb and gutter on both of those. So at, at the end of the day, there'll be access to residences and things like that. So it's, there'll, there'll be some things that'll tore up and people will be affected by access for a period of time. But the intent was tried to, to have at least the, the local residents have access as much as they can. I mean, there'll be people impacted that may not have access for a few days here and there. But that's how that was kind of all set up.
Jeff, the additional two hundred and eleven thousand that was budgeted for this project, do you already have that earmarked for something else this year? Or are we just putting that back for another?
We'll, we'll put that back for another, another one. Because we originally had, like I said, we originally estimated about nine hundred thousand, not, depending on what the cost would be. The city did some work. There was a little portion that was on Twelfth Avenue that was taken off of this. So that, because the city did some work, um, last year or the year before to fix some situations. So it, it just impact, it helped out the whole project overall. So yes, it'd go back.
And do you have like a five-year schedule of those projects?
Well...
That we could put on the website? I just get a lot of questions.
That is a good idea. We, we do have a number of projects and we're kind of getting, trying to schedule just some different things, like the ditch cleaning and some other thing, other things. So that might be a good, good thing. We have some out there, but we just kind of got to get a handle on what funds we have available.
Yeah, yeah.
And what we might want to use on some of the master plan projects. And those are big picture projects and we have a lot of little picture projects. So we have to make a mix of both of those. So we, we, and I think at this point, we have about three hundred thousand a year we can only spend on this type of project. And this is a couple of year proj- We can only spend on this type of project and this is a couple of year project, honestly, so.
Well, and for instance, when I get phone calls about drainage issues, it would be helpful to refer to some of the things we are working on so they don't think we're just deferring everything.
Correct.
It's not that we don't necessarily care about your neighborhood and know about this issue. It's that that's in the plan for three years down the road because of funding.
And we, we actually have kind of a notebook put together already on a number of projects, but we, they're not really scheduled depending on the funding right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's, that's a very good question and I think that would help us out going forward.
This project is probably a good example of one of those projects that without the Stormwater Utility that would compete against street improvements and everything else. And typical, easy to kick, you know, drainage projects down the road because it's not raining in the summer, you know, kind of deal. So I think this is a good example of a, of a maintenance need that we, we actually have some funds to, to address it long-term.
And Jeff, approximately how old is this infrastructure that we're working on? Are these fifties, sixties or earlier?
Some of it's a lot older than that.
Okay.
Some of it, this, this connects up to the Hyde Park area. So some of it was built in that timeframe, actually.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not new.
There are some that are newer on this, but
Okay.
The, the box portion is of that vintage, actually.
Okay.
Well, it's good to see this and as, as John indicated, we, we may or may not be doing this if it wasn't for the Stormwater Utility fee just because of the cost and has to compete with, with the street projects. Diverge just a little bit. Where are we, if, if anywhere, on looking at the third and Cleveland area? I know there was some hopes for a grant. Is that kind of gone and behind us?
Hasn't been announced as of yet. That was, we applied for that like last October.
Okay.
I was expecting to hear sometime around the end of January, February time period. I don't know if that's been delayed at this point.
So we're still, still in the mix potentially?
Well, we haven't, they haven't told us we're out of the mix yet. How's that? So I, I haven't had any news
All right.
To the contrary, at least at this point. But that, I don't know where that is at this point, so.
Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information on that. We can talk on the next week when we have that study session.
Study session, okay.
And just on the overall master plan, that project and maybe a little update on where we stand.
Because depending on some of that stuff might dictate what we do on the five-year plan, honestly. So it's, there's a, things are in flux a little bit yet, so.
Well, I'm just going to say, Jade, that that would be one drawback to having a list. People tend to say it's on the list, why aren't we doing it? Why are we doing this? Because, yeah, there's always things. But I, I think you're right to have.
It's a kind of a tough
Get the message that it's not in, yeah, not in concrete, but.
Plant, proposed tentative, anything.
But tentative can be
Tentative, yeah.
Put out there longer than we'd like to put it out there too, so.
Well, that took us away, I'm sorry. Well, back, back to this item. Any, any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion? Please?
I move to approve the bids for the Maple Street storm sewer improvements and authorize the mayor to sign contracts with AIPAC Kansas Shears Division, including acceptance of the base bid, alternate B and alternate C for six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and subject to all legal requirements.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, any further discussion? Linda Colwell, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Back to item five B, change order number one for golf course improvement project.
Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. If you remember, if you remember back in January, during your second, two thousand and eighteen, City Council approved a contract with Hauska Incorporated for renovations to the golf course for the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. For renovations to holes two, three and four. So this item is for a change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for an additional six hundred tons of greens mix for the construction of a nursery green. So I'm going to answer a couple of questions. Greens mix is basically a fancy term for engineered soil. So it's dirt that's precisely blended in a very specific ratio of sand and peat so that greens will perform well, will grow well. And, and so that's what, what that term is for. In this green, this nursery green would provide approximately eleven thousand square feet of sod, which would be enough for two greens and our, our average green is around five thousand square feet. So it'd be enough sod for two greens. In our future master plan phases, we do call to replace three additional greens on top of what we're doing now. The, the two greens that we're working on now, we just bid that sod for twenty-two thousand, one seventy-five. So basically, you, by, by constructing this green for twenty-two thousand, the first two greens that we replaced, we paid for it. The third green, then, then we're actually saving approximately ten or eleven thousand dollars for the third green that will be in a future phase. Cost of the seed is two or three hundred dollars to seed this nursery green. The other thing this nursery will do was provide us with sod for repairs. So currently, greens number one, three, four and fourteen all have this same greens mix underneath them. So if we do have a repair that we need to make, we can cut sod from this nursery that's grown in the exact same soil, cut it out and replace sod on those, on those new greens, which allows that sod to take quicker, has a less, a less interruption to play. As far as funding goes, this project was bonded last fall. The bond, the total bond amount was five hundred and ten thousand. Someone run through a few numbers. Sorry, I wasn't sure I was going to present officially or I would have had this on a slide for everybody, so, so bear with me. The bond amount was five hundred and ten thousand. The general contractor, the house, the bond for Hauska was two hundred, or the contract was two hundred and eighty-three thousand. The sod just for the greens for this phase was twenty-two thousand. Sod for the fairways, so reciting some of the fairways was a hundred and fifty thousand. The change order then, we're asking for an additional twenty-two thousand, five hundred. So you sum all that up, leaves us a balance of a little over thirty thousand dollars still in the project. We do have some other items we'll purchase. We're going to purchase some additional irrigation parts and supplies for repairs. And if we want to make an addition of a zone or something, we'll have that ability. We're also going to purchase some green covers. Our great big basically tarps that cover the greens to help them establish more quickly, so. So the, the funding is available through the project for this. And because of the, the cost reduction we see in, in future phases, we do recommend this change order. Talking with Matt Miller, Superintendent, had we known where our bids were, were going to be with Hauska? Because they were significantly lower. If you remember that conversation, you were questioning me on whether Hauska was bidding everything they should be or whether I had a concern with Hauska. Had we, we knew what their bid was going to be, we probably would have included this as an alternate on that bid item to just accept it. But since we obviously, we're not expecting bids to be that low, we see the opportunity here to build that nursery green, so.
So even with the changeover, you won't go over the five-ten in your opinion?
No, no, honestly, we'll still have a little bit of balance. I'm estimating around twenty thousand dollars even after the change order, which then can go to the next phase, whether it's design fees for the next phase or if maybe just, you know, to kick off that next phase, so.
And where will this be located?
It'll be located, you know where the restroom building is? On, gosh, I'm drawing a name, blanking on a name. There across the street from Salt City Splash is a restroom for the park. It'll be directly behind that. So kind of behind where the maintenance shops to the west of all the maintenance shops. We've already started kind of establishing that area. Our plan originally was just to establish that nursery with native soil or native sand. Cary Park's pure sand. So you can kind of see, if you drive, drive through the park, you can see where it's going to be. We've already started, started rough grading that area, so. And we actually already have the seed. Matt was just telling me he's, he bought the seed already because we were going to establish it just as native. But it really is a much, it will be a much nicer nursery and will serve our needs a lot better if we can use this engineered soil with a greens mix. And Matt, you see here for any challenging questions?
Help me understand it because I'm not sure that I followed you. You talked about the twenty-seven thousand dollars, providing about eleven thousand square feet and that's, that's two greens.
Yeah.
And, and then you said, how, will you be self-propagating or self-generating more than eleven thousand square feet? So that, because you talked about then doing a third green.
Yeah.
But in my mind, you've used up the first
They're in different phases.
Okay.
The, the three greens, eight and ten. So the three greens that we'll be building will be eight, ten and five in, in future phases. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on the phasing, so I'll, I'll make, I'll get this from Matt, but eight and ten will be together?
No, those will probably be separate as well, so.
So three.
Five and eight, they would all be in different phases.
Okay. Okay, so it'll be done in
It's not, I understand the fade, but I mean, how do you, if you're going to use up what you're buying, how do you have enough to do a third green?
We'll reseed it and re, and continue to grow.
So you've got the soil or the subsoil or whatever it is.
Yeah.
And you can continue to reseed.
Correct. And, and, yeah, that, it'll be six, eight inches in depth or more, a foot in depth. So when we cut sod off of that, we'll just reseed it and still have that greens, that greens mix there.
So, so how, how often might you be able to reseed that eleven thousand square feet? Do you use it up eventually?
Having Matt come up.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Matt, Matt.
Matt Miller, Golf Course Superintendent. We can use the whole thing. If we built two greens at the same time, we could use the entire nursery and just immediately reseed it at either in the fall or spring, proper seeding times and grow it back in a season. So we could do it.
So how many times would you be able to reseed it? Does this get used up or is it good for a tremendously long time?
If we're building greens, we'd use it a lot faster than hopefully repairing greens. We don't want to, we hope to not have to repair eleven thousand square feet each year, but it does give us that potential to have the matching mix underneath to, to make those repairs and still reestablish. Yeah, it's going to, I mean, yeah, it's a long time, a lot of years. And we can cut and cut and cut and get down. You know, eventually we'd have to put more mix in, but it's going to be a long time down the road.
Okay, five-ten years.
At least.
At least, okay.
At least, ten.
Okay.
What's green established, I have, I have no knowledge about, I have, I have limited knowledge about golfing at the best, much less what it takes to establish greens and whatnot. But is there, what's the risk of, of the, I don't know, the soil going bad or, or being, being polluted in some fashion? I mean, what, what, how assured can we be that five, ten, fifteen years from now, it's still a good base versus maybe in two years, something happens and we've gotten nothing out of it other than the, the, the two greens that we start with?
Keeping grass on it will keep it from being contaminated with anything else. And we, we'll still continue to maintain that green as we would any other green with aerification and top dressing and the usual programs we do on the regular golf course. And I, I mean, I guess there's no better guarantee than we have when we build a green. But that's the reason we sod the new greens when we build them, so we get that protected right away versus getting days like this that's blowing everything onto those, that mix if it's bare. It's also the reason we use those covers to help keep that protected. When we seed those, we would cover those up and, and help keep it that protected from contamination.
How long does a, a green normally last or how long is it good for?
Depends on how many divots they take in the player.
There's, there's debate on that. I've seen reports from USGA of twenty to thirty years. Our greens are much older than that. They were regrassed in the late nineties and we still continue to put new grass in on occasion. But, you know, if we maintain them the best we can, they last, they last a long time.
What are you anticipating doing other phases? Are those done yearly?
We've been doing, the last couple of phases have been done on a two-year program.
Because those are in the CIP, right? We go over those, okay.
So how many more, beyond this particular phase that we're talking about, how many more greens will, are there to be rebuilt?
With the current plan we have, there are three.
This current master plan started in two thousand and three?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, we do the math on that, fifteen years and we're still, still building.
Still building, huh?
We're about to have, we're nearing the halfway
We're making some headway, that's right, exactly.
We'll need another plan when we're finally done.
So by the time we finish this, it's time to start over at the beginning again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The, the biggest purpose of this is an irrigation upgrade, in my opinion, that it's, it's very old. The, the main line was put in the fifties, sixties and the lateral lines that we have on the existing course were put in the early eighties. So those are nearing the end of their lifespan. We don't, we're trying to upgrade this before we have major issues with that stuff.
Any further questions of Matt or Justin? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
By the way, we moved this item off the consent agenda to the regular agenda. I forgot to call yesterday, I apologize for that.
Thanks for the heads up.
I would have wore a tie.
Thought he was skating by on the consent agenda. That was my fault that it was on there, yeah.
Oh, surprises good every once in a while, huh? All right, any further discussion or is there a motion? I would move to approve the change order number one, amending the contract with Fusca Inc. for the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of an additional six hundred tons of greens mix.
And I'll second that.
All right, they're moved and seconded. Anything further? Colwell, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item seven, report of city officials.
All right, Nancy, anything?
Nothing.
John?
Well, I have something of kind of an interest here. I was last week reading the, the, the weekly newspaper called The Clarion. And on the front page of the paper, I've got to read this to you here, but I'm going to show you the headline here. It says, Andale Votes to Lower Residential Speed Limits to Twenty Miles Per Hour.
Good gravy.
On Monday night, Andale City Council voted four to zero to lower the speed limit on residential streets to twenty miles per hour from thirty. So all I'm looking for, folks, is two more votes and we can get this handled, so.
I move, we do not do that.
That's all I have, sorry about that.
Oh, that's funny.
Thank you for the fine information.
We don't have three votes?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Did, is that a certain timeframe? Like, because you're usually off the streets by what, eight o'clock or something? So after that, you can
All right.
We can speed.
I do have a few things, I'm glad Justin is here. Was finally nice enough this weekend to go to the park and Cary Park is my favorite. And I've noticed for quite a while, the waterfall there is out of commission. Are there any plans to repair that? I'm sure it's quite costly and what does that look like?
Which waterfall? The, the big fountain or the waterfall on the lagoons?
On the lagoons.
That is actually well water that we pump through there. So we have a recreational well and the state limits how much water we can pump into it. So the, so sometimes when it's off or the flow is down, it's because of that. We do have funds to repair. One of them is starting to collapse a little bit. Some of the, the boulders are actually sinking. So we do have funds in our reserve fund to, to pull those boulders out and put a concrete base and rebuild that, so.
Will that take place this summer or?
That is a plan, yeah.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
It's been on the list for a while, but that's one that gets pushed back over higher priorities, but it's to the point we really need to do something with it.
And the other question I had was about surveillance at our parks. I was really disappointed to read in the paper today about the vandalism at Orchard Park. This is not something new that we've struggled with, is vandalism to our parks. And have we looked at what surveillance would cost or?
I'm currently working with IT. Todd's made the presentation about the broadband network. So here, very soon, we will have internet capability at, especially Orchard Park. The water tower that sits right there is going to have some equipment on it. So we'll be able to, to, to really light up Orchard Park with internet. And so then we can do surveillance cameras, whether it's on the entrance or exits of the park, around the playgrounds, restrooms. Also, in two thousand and nineteen, I'm going to be exploring, looking at a, a security company. We have one with the zoo that walks through randomly through the night. So I might, might at least price that out and see what that looks like for two thousand and nineteen. Because, you know, it, it is an ongoing problem. I've, I've talked with PD, I know they're busy.
Yeah.
They can't always just, you know, have an officer sit and do paperwork, which is what I ask. You know, if they have a fifteen minutes, they need to file a report and they're in the area, can they sit in that parking lot? So, so yeah, we're aware of it and we're, we're, we're looking for solutions.
Thank you. I'm disgusted that we even have to use money on that.
Yeah. One option that I've floated out there is in the, here, in the next few months, I'll bring in the building for approval, for the, the rental building. And it will have a smaller space, kind of a small meeting room. We've also, we've talked to PD just, just real briefly about, you know, if that room was available, if we allowed PD access and gave him a, a mini fridge and a coffee pot or something, you know, could that be, you know, a substation? You know, it's not the right term for it, but a place that they could go and sit and work. And just having a police car there will, will, you know, get rid of all that.
Well, and Cary Park is massive, so I don't know how you monitor that.
Yeah. Cary Park probably gets a little bit more attention from PD because of the jail.
Yeah, oh, good point.
Because we've got sheriff, you know, law enforcement from all over the county are coming to the county jail there, so. Surprisingly enough, Orchard Park probably gets more vandalism than Cary Park.
Yeah.
Avenue A is probably, is on that list as well. It gets a lot of, a lot of vandalism.
Yeah. Well, thank you for working towards solutions on that. The other thing I had, it wasn't park related, but was approached a while back about the possibility of a company leasing the, the old water slide building. And we communicated briefly and I can't remember what the limitations were on that. But our canoe was interested in doing something with that facility. Wanted to know about the possibilities there or if you needed to have a sit-down with them or, or maybe you already have. What are your thoughts on that? Or that's, that is you? I thought it was Paul.
Well, it's, it's both. I can answer from a parks perspective and then there's, there's a lagoon and some other, other things there that are, are sensitive in nature. But we have identified that site as a future bike park. That's something that's in the CIP for a couple of years down the road. A few years ago, we had a, a company out of Joplin, Missouri come in and do just a feasibility study. So they looked at lots of different sites for a bike park. That's something we really don't have in this, really in the county. You know, any place you can go to ride bicycles off-road, whether that's a mountain bike type, type situation.
I had no idea, that's, that's a great idea.
So it's in the, I don't remember the years off the top of my head. I want to say in twenty, either two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty, we've got some design funds in the CIP. And in the following years, we've got some, some phased construction for that project, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I've been kind of eyeing that site for. It's honestly the only hill in Hutchinson other than the landfill.
Can you go out on Monroe near Highlands?
We have a soda ashill off the eleven.
So it lends itself really well to do something really unique in this part of Kansas that we, we could, it could be a destination park for, for off-road bicyclists.
I'm happy to hear that. I was thinking if it, if it was going unused for any longer, we needed to look at some innovative ways to, to address that, but thank you.
All right, thanks, Justin. I don't have anything. Mr. Manager?
Just a reminder of May, March fifteenth, eight-thirty AM. We'll have CDM in to kind of review the Stormwater Master Plan and kind of get a better picture of kind of what that looks like and, and where we're headed. And it'll include a lot of discussion on some of the bigger, bigger projects that we talked about a little bit earlier today. So that's all I would have at this time.
How long do we need for the executive session?
Let's just say eleven AM.
I move we recess into executive session pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B three in order to discuss issues related to two thousand and nineteen contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. The open meeting to resume in the City Council Chamber at eleven o'clock AM.
Second.
Then motion is second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Please call roll, Linda.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.